Sally, are you ready?
Yep.
Brent, you guys ready over there?
Yeah.
Okay, everybody's here, it's a pleasure.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all, and keep up your good work.
And we have her right here in Sarah, can you hear us?
I can hear you, can you hear me?
I can.
Great.
Kick up a notch here.
Okay, from regular agenda, I didn't get any thing that was any different.
Well, I will make a motion to approve the regular agenda.
Okay, that's a motion, can I get a second?
Second.
Second, okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, for the consent agenda, any last minute changes there, Jim or anybody?
Question, what are the exam fees? There's two, $230 a month, on a 759?
The inspections, certifications.
Okay, and then there was one for a sample of the room, what are we sampling?
Sample it before they discharge the room, to test it to make sure that they have appropriate levels to where they discharge in between seven.
Okay.
I have no questions.
Okay, I'm gonna look for a motion to accept consent agenda as is.
I'll make that motion.
Jeff makes a motion, can I get a second?
I'll second.
Second, all right, all in favor, say aye.
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 Minutes from the nineteenth, see any changes?
Yeah.
Any need there?
They look good.
I did see the one change on agenda item fourteen, I didn't, Brent, I did mention that to you already, do you want me to record the changes?
Yeah, we can bring it up.
Okay.
One was, go ahead, I'll bring it down.
I think that what needs to be changed is in the portion that discusses second approach for homes existing prior to 2023, I think this may be just a typo, the first tree cost was going to be $25 and the second tree cost is going to be $200 in my recollection, and it's recorded as 25 for the second tree, so I think that change needs to be made. Fourteen, the Boulevard Tree Program.
I apologize, I was.
Okay, also now, we talked, so, I did discuss it. Two seconds, any other corrections?
I'd motion to approve with that change.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Public comment, but you got anything you wanted to chat about tonight? Art, go ahead.
Martin Bolalter, from 0609, County seventeen, I had a question regarding item number nineteen on the agenda. Okay, I'll start like the first two, they kind of go together, but first off, I'd like to know what the Sparks property is, and second, I'd like to know, direct the staff to try and apply the property, and then a motion to pay.
Let's see, so the Sparks property is right south on seventeen here, when you get past Eighth Street, that open field to the, it's kind of enclosed in the poplar trees, that's Sparks property, when we did the motion, I must say that was probably in August, wasn't it, Brent, if you remember right? September? Yeah, I don't know off the top, it was this fall.
It's Spark, the Sparks had come before.
No.
Um, my guess, my second question has to do with like the executive. There's gonna be some discussion, and of course, nobody's privy to that, but after discussion, when there's motion made, is that public?
Yes, the final, final decisions are public.
Okay. And it's not gonna be a motion, now we decided to do stuff about the things we'll use to say that. I'm just curious.
I'm not sure.
I don't know. Like, after the executive session, we've discussed some stuff in private, which I understand.
Well, I'm in motion to take action based on discussion in the executive session.
Okay.
That's, that's an open meeting.
Okay.
Afterwards, you have.
Yep, then the motion, but the motion that's made.
Will be made in public.
Discussion and then motion, the motion will be specific.
I don't know if the motion will be yet.
We don't know yet, it'll be whatever, whatever's made as far as the final decision. Right, anybody else?
Number six, public comment.
Yes, we are, go ahead, Kevin, stand up, introduce yourself.
My name's Kevin Fisher, I'm a real estate agent, I'm also the state president right now for North Dakota Association of Realtors, as of two hours ago, I found out that the tax abatement had expired here in Horace, and so we're down, I'm down here on behalf of the builders, the developers, and the real estate agents to ask that we can be put on the agenda for your next meeting, discuss the abatement, we're concerned that, you mentioned that that was a mistake, let it expire, we currently are setting up a group, again, of developers, builders, and realtors amongst others, to talk to the different cities about the tax incentive financing, along with Renaissance zones and abatements, we feel it's very important that overall that does increase your tax assessed values, in the long run, you're making more money than by not having these values. You know, we have lost some sales already on some, I hate the word affordable, let's say attainable housing, where just recently, this is where this came up, that some people pulled out and said, no, we're no longer going to purchase a twin open J and L or something like that, and so I'm here again, I don't have a lot of preparation, because again, I just found out two hours ago, so I apologize, I apologize, we weren't aware that this was expiring, we should have known that, we should have talked about this ahead of time, but I'm here to ask that we can be put on your next agenda, which is what, January twenty-fourth, I believe, that we can come down and discuss with you in further detail the values of the abatement, and why it should be counted.
I have a comment that I'll make about that, so I specifically asked my city administrator if we should have that debate, because there are certain individuals on the council that would appreciate the abatement going away, and there might be some that maybe wanted it to stay, it never did get put on the agenda before the expiration date, so I apologize that maybe that wasn't put on the agenda when maybe it should have been to have that discussion, as far as the abatement goes, I guess, what the abatement in my mind is for is to encourage development and economic activity within a city, we really have a lot of growth going on, we don't need to, in my opinion, it's to encourage homeowners to come out here, I've heard from our city staff that we are very well, the only ones that can really keep moving forward with developing, and so, I guess, in my mind, if we're gonna just keep developing, we don't necessarily need to have an abatement when it's to encourage our city to economically grow when we're already there, and, and maybe I'm not understanding what that, what the abatement is for, but that's the definition, I guess, when I look it up, so.
And, and, and you're right, but I would say this, as a Realtor for nineteen years selling in this area, again, I live in Fargo, I'm a little bit nervous, but being left with you, with the diversion now passing, I mean, before, when people were looking, the concern was, you don't really want to be in Fargo because we're concerned about flooding, now the diversion is going to happen, it's gonna be much more competitive again, people will be looking at Fargo a lot stronger than they were, and so, Horace does not have that advantage anymore that they did over there, also, the nice thing about the incentive, the abatement is, it allows people to come in and spend some money right away for things like saw, sprinkler systems, home improvements that maybe they couldn't have otherwise, so they are spending the money in the community again to do these things, the only thing we have to be careful of is that it's clearly indicated to people on the abatement, that this is a, you know, full two years, and after that, it expires, so I always emphasize to my people that, listen, set that money aside, don't use it in your regular life, if you want to use it for home improvement stuff, that's fine, but be prepared, because after two years, that abatement has expired, but the abatement has proved very valuable, that's why we're getting together, I mean, we'd be the only community right now that doesn't have it, and, and I understand, you're right, we're growing, because in Fargo, you have the flood fund issues, again, that will be going away for now.
So is, oh, go ahead, Jeff.
So, several months ago, I reached out to several builders and developers to get their opinions on sales, most recent sales, whether they were being impacted due to the economy, and only one developer returned my email, if we do have this meeting in two weeks, I would expect a lot more input over the last year on how the economy has impacted sales, because of that, that's why I was, you know, if, if, if I'm gonna get that kind of feedback back where I got nothing, to me, things are fine, so if they're not, I guess I would expect feedback from them.
In two weeks, we would have a support compared to give it a feedback, here we are.
Okay, so let's do this then, Brent wants, let's put that down, two weeks, let's put that on the agenda, let's put it toward the top then, and let's put this so we can get some more input and feedback on this, so we can, I mean, if they're gonna come out here and have a conversation with us or want to, then let's have, make that happen.
And I just have one clarification, if I may, so is, is your feeling that people would not build in Horace if there wasn't a tax abatement?
They're gonna build, but the thing is that it's not gonna be the same number problem, people do like that abatement, they look forward to it, I know, when I bought my first house, it was a new construction, I did not have the abatement, so we had to scramble to put lines on my bills and things like that, it's nice to have that tax incentive, now the question I would have for you, and this is what I want to bring up to Fargo West, Fargo, I like the more heads, that they reimburse you on the backside by sending you a check instead of having the abatement up front, but I suppose the paperwork required to address that is more challenging.
And that would probably be involving the county and all that too, so it gets to be a bit more.
And then I just wanted to make sure we're talking about the same thing or clarify, we don't have any tax increment financing or Renaissance zones in Horace.
That's more developing, I mean, it's not to say it can't happen for some major commercial projects or something like that, if it's beneficial to you, but in a case like that, where they're, you know, taking an area that's, I'll say depressed, and, and making it more valuable, yes, we give the incentive for the short term, but the long term, most property values go tremendously, and then the long term gain on taxes for the future is tremendous.
And I guess what you said is kind of along the lines of what Naomi just said, to me, a, a tax abatement would be to attract growth to a blighted area, and I don't think that that defines Horace today.
Right, I mean.
Housing prices, as you guys know, when we talked about, I mean, we're constantly getting affordable housing, why, why can't builders build affordable homes, everything's expensive, lumber, concrete, labor, everything, I mean, so that's why I don't like the word affordable, because what's affordable nowadays, everything's gone up so much price, attainable housing, but we have to fund the people and houses, those that all, homeownership over renters, it's tremendous difference.
Look, Kevin, I'll just kind of tell you, I got plenty of phone calls this afternoon, because obviously it got out that this had happened, so I did hear from one developer who has currently lost four sales in the Horace area because of it, so I understand what's going on here, so let's just plan in two weeks, let's have another conversation about this, and you bring in some people, and let's do a presentation.
Thank you, that's all I'm gonna ask, thank you.
All right, anybody else? Yes, go ahead.
My name's Shelley, I'm a real estate agent, just to kind of put a little bit more on what you were saying, and kind of to Kevin about your thoughts on what the tax abatement means, I don't know, I personally believe, you know, the tax abatement is a great thing for it, it's gonna bring you guys, it's gonna keep us on even level with, you know, all the different cities, that's great, my biggest issue with it is that it was never put on any of your minutes, any of the last time that it was ever on there was March of 2021, where they agreed to have the tax abatement, now, us as realtors, usually it's our job to check on taxes, it's our job to check off, check on specials, and we write contracts putting our word on this is what we get, you can scour your website, and it had not said a single thing about this going away, we had creative homes in your town, bringing through home buyers, as this is an incentive to build new, and people were doing that with us telling them, yeah, they have, they have this going, December thirtieth, it was still not on your guys' website, it was saying that you guys had the tax abatement, we all know in new construction, families start six months ahead, at least, building their home, now I have families that have to drop out of it, because that just wasn't in their budget, and they're mad, they're super mad, so even if they could afford it, they're not going to, they're like, no, I, I literally lost in the forty-eight hours of finding out about this, I told two people, the two clients that I told, lost those sales, that's two for two, I'm gonna have to go back to all these people, we could lose all of those sales, and we've brought so many people to your guys' community, they're spending money, and it's, it's embarrassing, like, the money's gonna have to come out of our pockets, because we wrote contracts telling them, you get this abatement.
Yeah, like I said, it's.
I can't, it's.
It's super unfortunate that some of us probably asked for it to be brought up on the city council agenda, and it never got put on the city council agenda, it just got kind of, so I really don't have an answer for you on that, other than just know that there was many him and and han about, well, should it go on the agenda, or are we just gonna let it go, so I'm not really sure that that was a fair, not fair at all.
I absolutely agree, that sounds to be your resolution.
I know, but you know, Brent, that there are people on the city council that probably wanted to debate that, and how long does it last, once it's, once it's put in place, how long does that hold for, two years, like two years, so the last time it was done, was, it was on there in March of 2021.
It was, and it was discussed, it was discussed subsequent to that time.
So when does it, where's the two years that it expired at?
It, it is in, it is in there, I don't know the, I don't know the.
It was in the resolution.
I don't know the month, but it was discussed.
Yeah, the, you mean in 2021.
Um, it was discussed in 2022 also.
Yeah, I wasn't. I'd have to find it. It was discussed.
This all got out.
It was like maybe October of twenty-one, yeah.
This all got out, there were several.
It was discussed, but there was.
Hour you guys admit it, and for some reason, for a bulk of about six hours, the only minutes that were on your website was from 2021, everything else was gone, at four thirty, all of a sudden, all of the other minutes from the other years popped up, and I have, I have almost, I have several people that witnessed the same thing.
And I was in it myself today several times, and they were there for me, I, I don't know.
I just, it, it makes us all look bad and.
I, I guess I don't agree with that last comment, I, like, was in the minutes, just because we have to do it before we prepare here, as far as to try to answer to, it was discussed last year, I believe, Neil and I were both in that meeting, that they were gonna continue it for that year, and then we would discuss further on, post, two, twenty-three and forward, and that had not been discussed, as far as, how do I, you know, reconcile anything? I can't at the moment, it's obviously, like I said, I believe it was August, I reached out to seven developers and got a reply from one, so, at that point, it's kind of a, well, are you guys really concerned about it, and if not, okay.
In the last two years, I sold over fifty thousand.
Fair enough.
Yeah, the, it was discussed in like October, and it said that it was scheduled to expire at the end of December, those were, that was in the minutes, I know it was, I just looked at it not that long ago.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, then let's move.
I'm in favor, Sarah.
Yeah.
Just, I'm in favor of putting it on the agenda for next week, because I would like to dispute some of the comments that have been made, I feel strongly that that abatement is a positive for a number of people, I've benefited from it, and I think we should all be fully informed, so I would love it if the Realtors Association and Home Builders Association and anybody else that's interested would come prepared to make their case so that we can make a fully informed decision.
Okay, so Brent will make that happen, okay, there you go, Kevin, and there is, okay, it's a tourist report.
All right, Debbie Murray prepared this, I'm not gonna go through everything here, I basically just says, it was slippery, and we had tired time, we had to do my decisions, we got some extra time spent down here, the seatbelt chips, it's a grant from the government that they have the seatbelt chips. So yeah, the seatbelt strips, the UI chips, any of those, the distracted driving, under eight grand memberships, so they're all grants, that don't come from taxpayers, local years of federal grant, yeah, we completed the seatbelt shifts, and now we're into the UI portion of it, so there will be extra patrols, I'm a big UI guy, so I signed up for hours, so I, you know, be working some on this area, just a, a heads up, a little extra incentive if anybody's thinking about making good driving, I don't mind going out and having a drink or two, but I plan to have an, for the great things, they come down, I've seen them in Horace, so, can get one, I don't, I don't want to arrest anybody for UI, I take first thing, I don't need to do that crap, so, I'd wear out every, if somebody ride home, it really came down to, I'm driving, so, anyways, that's all I got on that, that's my little summary for the night, I looked through the crashes, there were six crashes, all fairly minor, I was actually, I actually took four out of the six crashes, nothing, no injuries, and thankfully, the animal calls, there's six of them, a lot of them involved, here, fortunately, it was on here, it's been a while, it's three hours, again, so it has the crash at fifty-five, then here, a couple of hunting dog calls, some of them were. Related, yes, not going in the kind of neighborhood, oh, unfortunately, I was gonna say on that, one crash did involve a city of Horace vehicle, and unfortunately, the other driver was uninsured and suspended, so, unfortunately, I was training one of our new guys, and we took that crash. My, don't deceive me, Brent, and it looks like parking signs are going up another place to the town, so, slowly, but they're getting up, so my intention with that, I'm still on dates, when I go to night, it's like, you know. I've created them there a long time, those kind of people, they're coming, I'm probably kind of trying to do the other areas, they're wearing black plates, and, they, you'll just see if they've been worn, try to be fair. Nothing else that really jumped out at me, I'm concerned.
Yeah, I didn't really see anything either, it's just like, being in December and all, kind of thought there might be a few more alcohol related incidents, but.
For us, literally, there's six crashes, actually.
Yeah, so I mean.
And crashes are anytime there are vehicles in ditches, if there's damage to the vehicle, necessarily two cars collide.
But just after that snow event, I expected to have more stats on the.
We have a lot more traffic, anyways, we don't have a category, that would be just your standard, cars in ditches, there's stuff without the damage.
Yeah.
Most good, classic, typically, the traffic, not a crash.
You guys got. Snowmobiles, they need to be registered in North Dakota to use the trails, is that right?
State maintained trails.
Okay, so they can't have in Minnesota, they have to have in North Dakota? Would have put you on the spot, I'm sorry.
I don't know about the crossing, I think they do need to be registered. Or drive North Dakota, they, 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 they also need to be sure of that, the other thing, glad you brought that up, I've seen it in town, friends, and I've stopped and talked with a few dudes, it was pulling very young children, so I'm assuming their grandpa and grandma, pulling like, two-year-olds, three-year-olds, in like a ice fishing sled, no helmets on.
Not even grandma and grandpa.
No, they did, so, but yeah, in North Dakota, law was still built, if anybody on a snowmobile under eighteen are being propelled anyway on a sled or anything like that, they have to have helmets, at a minimum, they have to have helmets, at a minimum, or they're a two or three-year-old who controlled himself in the sled, if you hit a bump or not, I don't think so, I don't have much power over that, as far as I can tell, country building, I just want people to be safe, and like I've said, everybody on snowmobiles and so we can leave that, don't abuse it, don't drive crazy, or the city of Horace will just say, all right, enough.
Yeah.
How many, like, that, there been any more, like, calls, like, when I called you about my mailbox, nothing?
No, we haven't had, had any, like, a double check. Just take, one second. Every time I go back, anyway, I get pretty stuff to do. Why would I have to have one of them too? I am on, like I said, the snowmobiling, I am hoping to get out on a little bit, staffing hasn't really. Yeah, on that call. And this was some of the guests at the house, some property on the way out, it looks like, so that's.
Thank you.
Any speeding issues on the roadway up here by the school, turning into beyond the normal?
Typical stuff.
Okay.
I'm on dates, we have, got it, fairly hard, Eighth Street, Seventy-sixth, a high school, Sixty-fourth isn't an issue right now, because it's, I'm passable, that's one I don't have to worry about for now.
Yeah, I was just curious, I, the numbers look good, I didn't figure there was any, anything more than usual, so.
I know, I'm hoping to get down with the snowmobiles and get them out, so, I mean, I have to deploy the prom horse, yeah, I have other things going on that basically will be able.
Okay.
Do you see red and blue lights behind you on a snowmobile, or a snowmobile, I could be the, maybe, right, yeah.
Yeah.
But I'm looking forward to that.
Question?
Um, no, just to back them up, since Horace Fire has been doing also what I'm gonna call emergency road access enforcement, the roads, and this winter, we've been trying to get out there at least a, once a week, to get people to move, and that's in truck areas especially, and we've been working with the SO when we have people that are being ignorant.
No, can't imagine.
Yeah, so, no, like I said, I'm limited to the law, what I can do, but what I've been doing to address some of those complaints is, you're parked, and you're in a legal parking spot, but you got, you get a snow piled up on you, I can easily articulate how that becomes a safety issue, and then you started looking at, does that vehicle, according to North Dakota abandoned motor vehicle laws, you know, it has, has to be drivable to be parked on the street, there's a vehicle buried under, maybe a snowdrivin', that's a, posing a, creating a traffic kind of, and I would say yes, in the most of cases, I see, so on those vehicles, I've been going around, and they get an orange tag on them, like, forty-eight dollar tow tag, at that point, then they're subject to, in mom, I have been going around , once that I'm not able to, addition parking sites, and you feel they're posing a traffic out, they're, the snow build up, I'm getting orange tag, and I've gone back around, and so far, actually, all of them have been moved, you know, too, appreciate everybody doing that, creating less paperwork, I'm gonna do it. Appreciate everybody doing that, creating less paperwork, but we have to do it in private. They're pretty easy, but.
Yeah. Okay, anybody have any other questions, concerns?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I apologize, I gotta head out, I have a full meeting tonight.
Thank you very much.
Sorry we couldn't keep you here for the evening, uh. All right, number eight, Jim.
What you have in front of you is Mayor Council is the, uh, app, okay, yeah. Phasing for the sixty-sixth street project, I have to get it off, the project starts at Seventy-sixth Avenue, which continues toward two sixty-fourth Avenue. Construction of waters, storms, and street improvements. Uh, this is going to be the other major north south connector, east side of the Shinnan River. Size probably around seventeen, so, um, we've had numerous design meetings with staff and the, uh, also the client who's on the infrastructure portfolio, and, uh, this is the final plan, so we have one sheet here. What we're asking tonight is to approve the plan specification, authorize the auditor to advertise for bids. Advertise for three weeks starting on January eighteenth, open bids on February ninth, and evaluate the bids, actually, the launch project, February twentieth meeting. Do you have it right now? After November fourth, final completion, there's a substantial completion, ten days before that, so that's a final completion.
What's that date again?
November fourth. This is about fifty-seven hundred miles of the street, so it's a pretty big project, but we're getting it out pretty early, so.
What did you just say?
Just repeat.
I thought.
It's gonna cost a lot, guys, be prepared.
I was chuckling too, that's funny.
Wow.
Were you, were you checking to see if we were awake?
Any questions on the, Jim, this one?
Sarah, I will send you the location of the fence, uh, in the element addition, I just didn't get a chance to get this today. Send it out to you, and I'll send you these sheets too. I, uh, forgot that you were gonna be here tonight.
No problem, Jim, I appreciate that. I'm, I'm good with, uh, the ninety percent plans that I saw, so, and I'm assuming that the end was just final touches, but, um, with that being said, I can go ahead with that motion to approve the plans and specs and authorize the auditor, send them out for bid.
Oh, we do, we'll do them one at a time, Sarah, just for accounting purposes, so let's just do the first one, approve plans and specs, you made the motion, can I get a second?
Second.
Jeff does a second.
I do have just one question, and I know we chatted about it, did we? I'm assuming that, um, I know there were a few homeowners that were maybe closer to the seventy-sixth corridor with, with getting the right of way needed into their yards, I mean, has that all been worked out as best as possibly could be?
We have to make one, another attempt, but Sarah wanted to go along with us, reach out to the homeowner on the west side, so there's just a little bit we're able to, uh, mess through a little bit, there are, there is an encroachment that we'll have to work through.
Okay.
On the west side, oh, on the east side.
Okay.
Uh, where the business is, there's some bunkers over there, our encroachment.
Yep.
Where's the, uh, eastbound railway boundary line, and we'll work through that.
Okay. And you're, you'll work with a homeowner on the west too? Okay, I just wanna, I assume that you were doing everything you could to make that as painless as possible in there, okay?
You've had some discussion.
Okay.
Asked, well, it's very impartial to some area right in front of his house.
Yep, I recall that.
Yeah.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, thank you.
Okay, thanks for the question, Stephanie, that's, uh, one of my dear neighbors, and I've been doing my best, I've been doing my best to keep him in the loop, but boy, I tell you what, it, it matters, so thank you.
Yep, I assume you were, Sarah, thank you for doing that.
All right, so Sarah made a motion, Jeff does a second, okay, so all in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, so authorize the auditor to advertise for bids, Sarah, you still wanna make a motion?
Yes, sir, I'll make that motion.
Okay, Sarah makes a motion, can I get a second?
Second.
After the second. Right, all in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries, all right, Jim, you got the next one, number nine.
Mayor Council, uh, the city has received, uh, floodplain permits for properties located at one seven zero three one fiftieth street southeast and four nine four six one hundred and seventieth avenue southeast. Um, these are both for demolition of existing structure as part of the FM version. These are, applications have been reviewed by city staff, and they recommend approval, uh, of the permits. The staff report says that they, uh, have no negative impacts on the city of Horace and is part of a larger infrastructure plan to ease flooding issues um, around the forest, so, um, these are, I, I would say, uh, properties that have been acquired by either southeast cast or the version, and those are just, we want demolition permits, so.
Okay.
You know, in the past, these have, this was discussed, there were less of them, apparently, there's quite a few coming because of the diversion. At the times, uh, staff was asked to bring them all to the council, that's something that you'd still want to do? Do you want it to be an incentive agenda item, is it something that can be improved on a, on a staff level? What is your thoughts? You originally talked about it, there weren't many of them coming, it was just kind of a way to keep track of it. It's also directed to keep track of the time of what it's been taking, uh, these are now done in-house by the project manager, and then I'm just presenting it to them, like here, but they are done in-house, and any questions, they'll ask me, but I just was curious, knowing that there are more coming, right, from the, for the floodplain permits, so.
So, so back when we started this, um, obviously, it was a lot more granular now. It, um, it's just a way for you to keep track of what is going on, um, if you guys can do it all in-house, I have no problem with you guys just doing it without us having to intervene.
It was tracking costs too.
First again, compared to that as part of our office, and now.
Yeah, that's, I mean, we're not.
Kept it in-house as much as possible, and not, uh,
Cause we were, we were.
So, I think it's a matter of, they'll be tracked, any question, or the most of them are, like you say, it's a way of policing the.
And the way you guys worded it, it was just for, uh, areas that needed large amounts of fill where it would affect the floodplain here, if it's just a house that you're tearing down or a barn, it's not really gonna affect the floodplain like a major development like Maple Lakes where they have to bring in three feet of fill for the entire property, so.
And, and what were, what were the city's costs in this process?
All to be honest, the reason I said the cost came up is because there's no, people.
Oh, okay.
Free, so it's just a matter of filling it out and submitting it, and at that time, it was discussed, should there be a fee? And the, the, if these were gonna take up, as an events all the time, and if they were getting outsourced, then it was, well, we need to recoup some of that. And I think I reviewed it between the rest of them, when all they've done, and all they've done in-house after.
We just wanna cover our processes, so.
Okay.
Our, our concern was paying consultant rate. Beams, yeah, that cost, cause it would've been on the worse. If it ended up being like ten hours work, well, that would've been a couple thousand dollars, and what I'm sure.
To evaluate their, the application for the permit, okay?
If they were, if there was one that was like that, that was pretty substantial.
But the vast majority of them are pretty, pretty simple and very site-specific to a smaller area. We're not talking a miles-miles area, it's normally household or, uh, like ones where they do, for, I think, their demolition or doing like a infrastructure or something like that right now, yeah, so.
Probably for now, this stuff could almost go on a consent agenda because.
That's why I was wondering, if you could just throw it on consent, and if you wanted to take it off, you could take it off.
Yeah, there isn't anything magical that was going on, or we went through this, so.
I don't think that's a bad thing, with your meeting every other, every two weeks, um, to approve them and just keep them on consent if you want to.
Yeah.
When you get a chance to see what the permits are coming in, if something does figure, because I don't have a, uh, interest in the floodplain stuff.
Yeah.
Only reason I say that you've had to file a permit.
Well, no, it, it started off that anybody that had to gravel down on their driveway had to get a permit.
So, you guys already putting on the consent agenda?
Yeah.
So why don't somebody make a motion for that, then?
Make a motion.
Official. Hey, Jeff, make some motion, put it on the consent agenda, can I get a second? Oh, and approval, the ones that we've got?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
I'll second that.
Yeah. There, the second. All right, so all in favor, say aye.
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 Go from here.
For clarity, I was approving the permits for now, and then future movement.
Future, correct.
Yep.
All right, Brent, you got ten. Should you get that ready?
You would probably just, this too. There's a, cotton. In the case, if that's what I'm being on, need to get comparing land values in horse over the last couple of years, and you have, like, one, twenty-twenty and twenty-nineteen, twenty-twenty-two is not available yet to us for uh, doing this analysis, what we're looking at is trying to find out what's the average, um, lot price per square foot in horse, and this has been helped us understand a cash and blue rate to revisit. Currently, the city has cash and blue rate, when we have a new development, the plat come forward to us, it is a land dedication of ten percent for residential, or five percent for commercial, I believe, residential, um, and the cash and blue, their option of they don't like, give us that ten percent of land, is a converted, some dollars for cash and blue, and right now, it's a dollar fifty square foot. So, what you have before you is really looking at, the yellow is the average of property, so like twenty-nineteen, the average price per square foot was three dollars and forty-three cents. And so some of them were down to like a dollar seventy-one, a dollar eighty-two, a dollar sixty-seven, where others were six dollars, just over six dollars, six sixty-eight. Begin to twenty-twenty, the average actually dropped down to three fourteen. They still have the highs and the lows, you have some down to a dollar ninety-six per square foot, all the way up. Five. Those were the higher ones I saw in here, five. We look at twenty-twenty-two, it did jump up, we all know the cost went up, man, people, uh, property values went up last year. Uh, earned in twenty-twenty-one, and then also twenty-twenty-two, we know the property values went up, we just only have a decline for the scratchy here. Average of five dollars and twelve cents, but in twenty-twenty-one, there were some that went for nine ninety-eight a square foot. All the way down to a dollar fifty-four square foot.
Wow.
Yeah. Big ranges, and that's why we did the averages, we also found that if a lot of this is bigger, it went down, so what you see in the blue is lots greater than a half acre, uh, price for square foot dropped down a little bit. So in twenty-twenty-one, it was three dollars eighteen cents, in twenty-twenty, it was actually higher, so it was three seven two, but then twenty-nineteen, it was one ninety-two. The last time the city, well, when we incorporated this dollar fifty per square foot rate, was around twenty-eighteen, late twenty-eighteen, then maybe, or early twenty-nine. And we had some kickbacks, some grumblings about it, however, it did simplify how we can do cash and blue.
What that grumbling is like, or, or that?
Nobody wants to pay more, or pay, pay, you know, cash and blue higher than what they think they should, um, and then you have one option in our ordinance, which I believe we should bring up, future would be where a developer can have an appraisal done to try to justify value of the land. However, they'll do that appraisal based on what the value of the land is, it's raw land, nothing there, not developed or anything, yet then we're going through plating and a lot of things, so these specials to develop the land, increase the value of it, so we're trying to argue and keep it simple. And I don't think we've had a developer do a appraisal approach, because do you recall, I don't think we've had one in years, I can't possibly, yeah, because they spent quite a bit to have to do that appraisal, so they really just go, they either do the cash or land dedication, the cash and blue dollar.
I'm sorry, what did you say the current cash and the rate was? Okay, thanks.
What we're concerned at staff level was, a lot of developers didn't seem to blink at high at the dollar fifty now. And it's going, okay, if there's no hesitancy at a dollar fifty at all, then perhaps we need to miss at that rate. And we know the land values went up, but our cash and blue rate didn't, so that's why we did this analysis for you, um, it's pretty basic analysis, but it's helpful tool. Um, at the staff level, I do think going up to be like two fifty would be appropriate, and the reason why is because your parts of, those lows, even though we had a dollar fifty back in twenty-nineteen, that was about half, or actually a little, it's more than half, under half of what, uh, the average price for square foot is, so in twenty-nineteen, the price for square foot was three forty-three. Three fourteen in twenty-twenty. And our cash moves a dollar fifty, so we're under half of what it is, so if you, and take a similar watch it, and that covers your lows. Twenty-twenty-one, it was five twelve, that's why I'm saying you go around to, and you see the cash and blue. However, you're more towards the bottom of what those lower price slots are having born.
Brenton, can you explain to me why we wouldn't go with the actual between whatever it was, three seventeen and three eighty-three? Why are we going down to two fifty? I just wanna understand that logic.
I was just trying to be consistent with how we've approached it back like in twenty-nineteen. So we had about the same difference, we're about a little under half of what the average cost per square lot is, and try and be consistent going forward.
So, but, but you said before that, listen for a second, because you said before that, that that rate was set in twenty-eighteen, did I misunderstand something?
It was around late twenty-eighteen, twenty-nine, early twenty-nineteen, around that time, and we could not get, we didn't get data from Cass County that went back to twenty-eighteen, so I had to work with nineteen.
I don't know, I'm, I'm struggling a little, because, you know, Cass County's come in the last couple of years and had us as a council make some pretty difficult decisions about tax increases for people, and I don't think that should be just for residents, right? I, I think that the costs as they go up, everybody should have a piece of that. Um, maybe I'm wrong, what does the rest of the council think?
I think you make valid point, Sarah, I mean, what, what is it the, what would the disadvantage be? Just for discussion, to, to just go with what the.
If, if the developer didn't like the cash and move, or were comfortable with it, they just have to do land. So right now, we have developers that play on dedications, and they're required to do landing.
But who, and, and, but what's the entity that chooses, um, land dedication versus cash and blue? Who's making that decision? What?
The same council would give the developer choice, say, land or cash and move. When the plat is brought forward to the same council, also has a new file decision, they accept that cash and moves. And a lot of times, it's a land dedication, a little bit of cash and move. Uh, not very often, they do entirely, but on their essence of smaller, you'll, you'll get the, the recommendation from our ministry, which has kind of an initial layout of what the, the land dedication's gonna look like, plus the cash and move if there is any. But at the end of the day, for our ordinance to end, approval of whether that recommendation is valid, or you want to do something else, is in the hands of the city council.
Okay. At the time we review the plat.
So, I, I was going, like I said, somewhat consistent in how it's been before, we were about a little under half of what the average rate was. Our rock science specific saying it was this exact amount down to the penny, um, yet the council wants to just go with the most recent average we have, we can do that. Say, okay, it's gonna be twenty-twenty-one, it was five twelve, so you have five twelve, that's the average. Say, okay, it's going to be twenty twenty one, it was five twelve, so you have five twelve, that's the average. To keep in mind, that's like, that's the average, so.
Is there any disadvantage to them? With like first, like the cashing versus like the land dedication, like is there any disadvantage?
Is there probably advantage one way or another, disadvantage one way or another?
Yeah, tell us.
If, if you have a higher cash rate and they do choose to go that way, obviously they get more money, otherwise you get the land. A lot of times the developments that are thrown at council and line commission staff. Have land dedication, that's component of it. And that gives the ability to have park amenities or public facilities. I mean, that's a positive, it does help me, it will set some of this probably a little more desirable. If you do a little more cash flow. Helps you with different burdens, so it's. You can go either way, however you'd like it, if you have a cash and the rate that's closer to the average, I think you're going to see developers just do applications. Also every time. If you have it. In behalf of what the average is, like we have been following about back in like twenty nineteen. You're right, see them probably do some, still do land, but they may do some cash. Five dollars, I think.
Brenton, I, I want to be very clear that I understand this, though. Council determines which method is chosen, correct? So the developer may say, you know, we would like to do cash and loo. And if the council finds that maybe it makes more sense to put a park there, they can. Or vice versa, there's been some talk about parks in our area and maybe. We have parks and we need the cash instead, I don't know, I, I'm just throwing it out there. The ball lands in our court, correct? So we can make the best decision for the residents of our city, is that correct?
I understand it's correct, yeah, the council makes that decision. The developer will make recommendation, park district make recommendation. So it's.
But does bring up an interesting point, Sarah, you bring up an interesting point.
Did it just click?
It, it clicked a little bit more there with your, with your next comment, I mean, if the council has the final say.
Make sure you have cash and blue rate. You don't go so high that makes it. So difficult for them to do anything.
Like in other words, we've already pissed off realtors, so I guess.
I'm just saying, there's something.
That we say like.
To consider too, within that table, we broke out in that average of price per square foot that's greater than point five eight. When we look at typical land dedication, we're going to get larger slots of land. That are typically going to be at more of a reduced price, so if we're looking at kind of going that average. I would at least recommend looking more so at that greater than a half acre. Average is going to be more in line with what those larger value prices, or larger parcels are going to be terms price wise.
You're thinking like that three eighteen?
Around that's probably three eighteen or three point one eight.
Yeah, I agree with that, I'd say.
Okay, any ideas, extra mere opinions? Well, yep. I'd like to point out, it's a park board that makes the original. They meet with the developer and they're the ones. The separately elected park board, the ones who originate these agreements. Correct, yeah.
So what, like, I guess, what are you trying to say?
What I'm trying to say is, is you have an elected board that actually originates the agreements with the developers. You don't have it, the city does, the park board is an elected board, they're the ones who originate these decisions. They're the ones who should also be looking at whether or not we want to, we want park land here. Now. Yes, you, you guys get, get the final say on it. But you have to have a reason to override. The elected park board. Right, but that's why we haven't, I mean, I think we've done that yet that I can recall. You, you haven't done, I just don't want you thinking that. Yeah. Because. We don't pass, we don't let the plat come to you until that. Yeah. That part is done, that the park board has actually done that.
Then Lucas, how is that, if he's saying that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Wouldn't recommend.
It's just the word license, what the chairman is saying is you should have a reason if you're going to do it, you shouldn't just do it just to do it.
Well, I think everything we do is for, we have a reason, we have a vote.
So let's say you have a development. That. Park doesn't, then we'll take the industrial park. And this is probably something like this, probably a month, here's a, park district doesn't have a fit for a park per se. The cash and loo would be a. It'd be difficult to put cash, cash and move towards parks in that area, because it doesn't exist. But the city may have the use for land in that area for public facilities. The city that even the park district may directly say, yeah, we're going to put a little pocket park here, we want this for whatever to use. And say, oh, well. We have a use for, so we see a need that would benefit the city for public facility. And the city can say, we're going to use that for that purposes that. So, but we would have to have, like Luke said, we have to have a reason, we have to have the use for that.
And the reason I can do that is because all of this language is in your zoning ordinance. Yep.
Yeah.
And then we've gone through this before too, so I mean, it would have to be a pretty big, an odd circumstance like that for us to do something like that, so. Where were we at in the?
Agreed, but it, it gives us some options and it allows us to work with developers and the park board. And be a little more fluid, I think, if we have a more fair rate instead of always defaulting to that.
Yeah, so what would be the recommendations from staff on this to go the average?
I, I think if you're, like Jase mentioned, you had a good point there, if you're to go on average of lots that are bigger than half acre. For twenty twenty one, it was three.
Yeah.
And I do think that's a lot. Reasonable, especially considering you have these lots that are on the lower end. That you're not asking for more than what the models are, right? As for commercial and industrial. Cash and blue rate was, how it was done in the past, it's been, or it is. It's commercial, industrial is three dollars per square foot, but their dedication margin is twenty five percent, so it's basically the. It's all to be about the same, either it's the same, so whatever you agree on with residential, pretty much double it. And that would get you your commercial, industrial, cash and blue. You're big cleaning, that does fall in line around half of what. The average commercial industrial lots are going for right now, the commercial, they're ranging from twelve to sixteen dollars a square foot. Of course, so if you go.
Six point three six would be a double.
It puts you at, yeah, six point three six, so they're pretty close to that.
Okay. I guess I'm all right with that, it would be a little bit more. Pass, but three point one eight for residential and then six point three six for commercial, we're talking about. If you guys want to go higher, but I think it's probably be about a good, good rate to do for now. We can always revisit this later, but I think we need to update where we currently at.
Okay.
Sarah, what are your thoughts?
Sorry. I'm, I'm okay with that, I think that's a, a fair starting point.
I'm gonna look for somebody to make a motion that we do residential, cash and blue at three point one eight, and then the commercial industrial will be at six point three six.
Take the motion.
Okay.
I have a second.
Jeff makes the motion, and he does a second. All right, all in favor say aye.
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 All right, motion carries, street bond.
Hey.
This again.
Hey, for street bonds, currently the city takes a thousand dollar street bond. For like new homes, business, industrial, basically any new structure, residents or occupancy. The thousand dollar street bond is intended to cover costs of damages to the street. If they occur during time construction. However, with that street bond is to end on. Builder, busting that street bond at the end of their build, after the seal. It's really hard, difficult to. Look for damages at the streets, especially this time of year. And discovered by snow. On average, we're averaging about thirty percent of the street bond being retained. From damages to our roads.
I thought it'd be more, yeah.
Now, we do have situations where we keep the entire street bond. But to give you an idea, if you have, like, just tell me on the cost, I like to use this example. If you have one section occur, so about like this table. That's going to be about eight hundred dollars, maybe even a thousand bucks now of cost, of cost higher. There were quite a few that we had looked at where the cost of the. Yeah. There have been times where our staff has been all these. Thought contractors doing things where it would cause damage to the street, or there it does. But we really haven't been able to force the group to be. So with the street bond too. There's a ongoing liability. On our books, so we have to report it saying, hey, we have this money, but it's, it's sitting there in idle, it doesn't hear your buck in your general fund per se. It's reflected in like this whole. What I'd like to do is get rid of doing street bond. Introduce a street repair fee. By doing the street repair fee. Funds go into the general fund. Or, and we could, if council wants to earmark and fork streets, and when we're doing the street patching or different street projects, you have that money there. It doesn't create that ongoing liability of until the developer or the builder tries to claim that bond back. And you have to go evaluate for the damages. Because if we have, example Jim, well, review. Site. Evaluate the damages, create a report summary, estimate, identifying the damages. We got two hundred fifty dollars probably or better in the gym's time. Just doing that each time. So we're really not covering our cost, so that's why we're like, well, let's keep it simple. Can we simplify this, not have it as a bond, just have it as a plot out fee, we know retain this. And then our staff will work with Lucas and the deputies of. Can we find ways to strengthen our ordinances to where if we see somebody causing some damage to the street, we're able to be quicker to address. Those damages, that's a whole separate category.
This thing we run into too is that you have the subcontractors that cause it, probably, probably. Six, I said seventy percent of the time, but it's not the contractor itself.
And my other concern is that on the street bond. Is if we do return the street bond. To the builder after the bill is done, let's say it was two or three months after the house, home build is done. Well, the home buyer. It's, it's very paid for that street bond. As part of their permanent cost of the building, of the home built. But is there a guarantee those dollars are going back to the home buyer? Or is it just going to the builder? By doing the repair fee, we've taken out ballpark average of how much our cost of it. And that's going as a cost of the permanent fees to the home buyer or builder and the buyer, and it's not refund going back to the builder. So that's why I'm doing every, helpful also. So. Why I'm bringing this up for discussion, see where council's at, if you're, if the council's all right with introducing the street repair fee, the street bond. As I said, but my, one thing I'd love to see for the city is not have that liability. All those functions kind of same, idle way to be cleaned, like just get that all the way to. So that dollar, those dollars add up, I mean, if you look at, we did near around three hundred new homes last year, that's around three hundred thousand dollars. That basis at Michael.
So how many houses actually had a? A refund of that thousand dollars versus not?
I apologize about the exact number, Jim.
I, I'm not even looking for the full amount, I'm just, okay, houses that actually were, if they're reaching. And you can be approximate, you don't have. Really?
Maybe we looked at it, we evaluated the curve, mostly the curve for the street, the curve was evaluated on three thing, one of them they cracked. It was cracked, it was just a hairline crack, I could crack, so we can be that. But if it was cracked and then displacement, as far as something that would hold water or something like that, and that was a minimum of four feet removal and replacement, because. People get machines in there to do, so four feet is what we found with repair, the rule of place contractors. And then obviously it was settled and depressed or something like that, just, I've seen pictures, I've seen it done where someone with a drywall, they stick the arm out on the, on the truck, put it right on a curb that's thirty inches wide. Just pounded it in the living and, and then a bend that comes back up, but you go and it's void underneath it. So there, the very, there were. Not a lot that got a hundred percent back.
Yeah.
But there were some, because there also is a little damage, I mean, if we leave that top itch now. So folks are going to come along and there's going to do some of the, the facing, the face is going to be a little bit chipped up and whatever else, but. I, I would say that maybe a quarter of them got the whole thing back, all the hungry like that. It's the blatant, didn't really, but at once. That you don't think, oh, we're thinking a hundred dollars.
Like when he leaves the trailer out there and put depressions on the.
That's, that's, that's one of them, yeah, another thing is too, where they're delivering materials, if it's something mine proved back where that truck, there's, you want to. Fall off, and that's very good, so. And we.
Or like what I saw this summer. When I saw a telehandler that actually went into a muddy boulevard and sank up to the top of the wheels. And did an extreme amount of damage, but by the time the city got wind of it, nobody's out there, nobody knows who's done it. And no cost can be assigned, because everybody points fingers at the next guy, it's just a bad way of doing it, we can do better.
And with the street bond, that's what we're experiencing too, it was, well, my subs didn't do that. And it was a sub from across the street, the building across the street, but they backed up their truck, putting.
They just pointed a circle.
Yes, yeah, so that's what we're trying to eliminate that figure point, and if we do catch. Contractors doing things that damage our streets, then we're. Able to call on it, and that's where I would say we're able to keep up the organization.
Without it, do you worry about there being more damage by just paying a, paying a flat fee of three hundred dollars? Where they just don't care at that point? Do you know what I mean?
It's a good, they carry it away. Be perfect on it, it's a matter of do you take the money, if it's case of, they just have the money and put it. Into the overlay, it's like. Fixing the curb shutter.
Yeah.
Is three from there about?
I was just going to ask, was that, I maybe missed that you had proposed enough?
I think the fact that you're not going to give any of it patch. Means that you got a better opportunity to build up more, longer, I think than, than the amount that you keep. I mean, what I'm getting at is that. Five houses. All of those and keep that very dollars for the capital.
Yeah.
Is it different than giving everybody back there except for one, kind of the same thing. But, so I don't, I don't know if it is or isn't, it depends on the severity of the, of the.
Damage.
Yeah, yeah, it's something if we do see the, the builders that got them.
Reckless?
Reckless, we're always able to come back, it's resolution. We, we set, we set that these committee resolution, which is actually one of my excellent items, so. We're able to come back to, you know, Jim and Joel, our staff and Adam, little, hey. They're tearing, they're ruining our streets, and we're able to put back, okay, yeah, they're beating this up, it's from the long construction, we're able to come back to the council and say, we needed up that fee, let's up it. Welcome three hundred to four hundred.
I was almost going to say when we start four hundred, that's forty percent, where we're sitting right now. I was almost gonna say when we start four hundred, that's forty percent, where we're sitting right now, I'd say that's. Uh, because initially I was gonna say that we should just split in half, but. I'd say four hundred is fine, we start there and see how it goes, and if we start seeing more damage. Can always knock it up another hundred bucks or whatever. I'm probably not that.
But instead of three hundred, start with four.
Yeah, start with four hundred. She doesn't want to go higher. We start there and see where it goes.
No, I was, where I was leading with my question is how many get a refund, to try to figure out where to set it, but.
Sarah, anything on that one?
I don't know. All the talk tonight's been going fifty percent or something, so I stopped now, ha, ha, ha.
There you go, all right.
I, I just, uh. You know, people start caring when dollars start coming out of their pocket, so. I've seen too much of this, I've taken so many pictures, it's not even funny, and. And you're absolutely right, we got an awful lot of people that just do not care, and we need to have the funds. To keep our community beautiful, this is part of the beautification of our city, so, um. As far as I'm concerned, I have no hesitation going at fifty percent, but I'll, I'll default to the rest of the council on this one. Um, it's just my personal thought based on what I see day in and day out.
And that's where if we do find excessive. Damages, like we're able, if we can catch somebody doing excessive, then. That's in the hole that they're called for, or possibly they might have already done the street. Fee, repair fee, but then. They're probably legal on that. Or if we're able to cite them. Our staff is on a way a lot, you know, the developments. Frequently. With our building inspectors and also the Joel, project managers. Our bud works guys, they are out by the front, so if somebody is. Doing something they don't understand, take pictures. Yeah. Stephanie.
Let me, let me ask this, um, Stephanie, I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt, but. Um, cost of materials just keep going up. And. We've had a lot of discussions about some of the costs of maintaining streets, this council sat through. Uh, quite a discussion at the League of Cities, so, um. Stephanie, please, I'll, I'll default to you, but I also wanted to add that tidbit because. Costs aren't going down, they just keep going up.
I would be comfortable with either the four. Or the five, I guess I actually kind of maybe side a little bit more with Sarah on the. Five. But I'd be fine with either.
No.
I guess five it is.
Pick one and go, let's go.
I'll make a motion. Um, to, I don't know, you want it worded to, um.
Street repair fee.
Dis- discontinue, um, street bonding and initiate a street. Repair fee of five hundred dollars. Is it per? Per building permit?
Stephanie makes a motion, can I get a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, Sarah, second. All right, all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, sorry.
There you go, all right, there.
Not fast enough with the mute.
That's fine, all right, motion pass. Great resolution, Brent, you got that one.
Schedule. Okay. The main push of this is more housekeeping, cleaning things up. However, for different fees that we charge. Uh. The average utility rate resolution that identifies. Yep, so we charge for like water, sewer, trash. Um. The first part of this is for water rates. Is to delay the rate increase or. Uh. Our monthly fixed charge or base rate. So, uh, basically most res, pretty much all residential houses. It currently is nineteen fifty, it's supposed to go up to twenty seven dollars in February. Uh, cost per thousand is at four twenty, it's supposed to go up to five forty. However. Since we're continuing having delays on that connection to casserole, I hate to say that over and over, but. Holding true, we've been holding true to. Would alertingly increase that rating, do that rate increase. Until after we've gone live with casserole. So, we're proposing to push that back to July twenty twenty three. And hopefully we'll be live casserole by then. I continue to push it back to you guys if.
I'm just, you know.
Uh, I, I know, don't wanna rain on Jim's parade with some of that stuff, but I, I think it's looking a lot more optimistic with the connection to casserole. Uh, as for the wireline replacement project. But the connection to casserole is the big. Component. Like I said, if you wanna go back, you wanna push it to August, you can push it to August, I was just saying July. And if we need to push back more, we'll come back to you again, I have no problem coming back to you again, push it back.
Oh, yeah, I'm just gonna say, I like, I love to just enjoy my water. Before looking at the bill.
Well, then, let's push it, let's push it.
I think you enjoy my water for a month or two before you gotta get it.
Usage is typically, you say it's a fact of July by trying to get a bill, it's. Costs, but.
Let's move it to July, we can always move it again.
So July of twenty twenty three. Is to delay the wire rate increases until. Any concerns with the water rate part? The other part on water. During our twenty twenty three budget discussions, everyone knows approved. Why that actions council was to increase the water tap fees, it's like if you build a new home. You had the tap fee was seven hundred and fifty dollars, she said, that's awesome. That was already done within the budget. Just cleaning it up in the rate, so like I said, it's some cleanup. Sewer is the same case.
I don't, I don't recall that, Brenton, you said the tap fee you're trying to increase, why are we increasing a tap fee, I don't recall.
That was increased, that was increased with the twenty twenty three budget. Those tap fees are increased when we did.
Why, why was it increased with the budget, I, I don't. Recall that tap fee increase that we're already taking water increases, why are we increasing that, I'm just, refresh my memory.
That tap fee is when, like I said, when you have a new build. And it's tapping into that aim. And that covers our costs for like water meters. And install.
Yeah, I know what it is, it's also for existing customers that have to tap in. But what's the need to go from seven fifty to a thousand, are we not covering our costs is what I'm asking you.
Yeah, it's to make sure we're covering the costs, Sarah, that's one thing, we, or maybe you weren't at that meeting, but we did go through this with the conversation about that, that we want to make sure we're covering our costs.
Cause we have the meters, and then we have electronic green. Or it's called like a heard, electronic green device on top of the meter. And as. You can see costs for two days. So to those, they do get more expensive too.
I just want to ask a question, maybe it's really stupid, but all the people that are going on to casserole, they don't have to pay this, right?
They deal casserole on. Their tap fees are their costs, so, this would be for the. Customers, it works, it's uncommon to have a fee like that. Um, I know where it was before, we had a tap fee, it was almost double what it is.
You, you mean for a new, new home that are being built?
So when you build a new home.
Okay.
You pay that tap fee, it's like connecting into that system. And it's like covering your costs, like the meter, the install, the electric, the green device.
The residents that have it all, for example, now we're getting. The water, do you have to get?
No. So this one, the buy, your own example, when that.
Well, needing to. Do their own connection.
That's for, if, if you build a house. In casserole service area, that's their.
Oh, gotcha.
Process, so, it's just for a new home build and. Art service area, I provide.
I do want to clarify something, um, or ask. The people that are getting new water lines. Or that are choosing to get a new water line from. The project that is currently going on, the horse water project. Are they gonna be charged this fee to get a new line from the curb stop there?
They're already.
I realize they're already connected, but if they choose to get a new line from the curb stop to their house to make sure everything is new?
This is your initial.
Okay.
It's just your initial connection, so if somebody was on well, wanting to connect into city water, that's, that. If they were existing connection and they want to just get a, so I'm getting a service sign, that's not a new connection, that's not, it's their, that. If they're building a new home. Then they have, because of wild connection to our system, to our line. And they're gaining a meter, they're gaining electronic reader. And it's getting installed, or they're gaining installed with their plumber or whoever, but we're also checking it within the system, making sure. Uh, water meters are being. So, it's, it's mainly to make sure we're able to cover our costs in time, that means. Uh, but that would be for water, sewer. Is, doesn't have a meter, but this connection into our system. So that's. Eight percent fifty a thousand dollars, that'll have been the budget, so just, like I said, housekeeping on this rate resolution. Garbage. Uh, during the twenty twenty three budget. Raise garbage from twenty four dollars to twenty five, twenty. That's to cover our annual increase with waste management. Also, we're working towards identifying an area where we can do some hardcore recycling, we can switch by. This year, with that hardcore recycling, with that fee. Go over and try our best, switch by with that.
Since we're talking about garbage. I just have a lot of concern with waste management. Is there? Another option, because. I don't know, there were some residents that were really upset because their garbage keeps getting missed. And all kinds of weird situations in town, and. We're gonna be paying for it, residents are paying for it, like they're chucking their garbage if you picked up. I don't know how to get waste management to like. Get it together.
They have been going through some. Changes. Waste management, and there have been quite a few. Calls, conversations, waste management saying, get it together.
Okay.
So if there are any concerns, you know, we encourage them, let's know, say, oh, I have personally actually reached out to. Their new manager at Waste Management, the guy in charge of operations for our region. I met with them, expressed concerns, I know that they've asked about introducing another day. For pickup. And. That might be something. Up for conversation or being. Brought up in the near future, um. Because yes, they've had some challenges.
Yeah, well, you're probably gonna get some calls on the phone because.
And I don't hesitate also to, if the pain on severity of the issue there, if somebody's having some challenges. Give them the contact info directly to the person in charge of the district here.
Well, I'm just wondering, is there like another vendor that we could, honestly, we think that's right?
With them?
For how much that.
You know, a couple of years left on our contract. Um. Are there many vendors, are there many vendors which are too trash? And Waste Management has bought out a lot of ambition. And what? There's maybe.
The guy, the guy that owns Batman. Uh, trash service, the whole by Kendrick, he was at one of our meetings once, he talked to me and says to. Talk to you about, you gotta provide a service or.
But that's, that's also a bit all.
Yeah.
That's could be a bit all service.
I would like to, when that time comes, open that up to them then, because. There are a lot of people that are frustrated with the services that are being provided.
Do you, do you know when our contract?
I don't have the.
Okay. Okay.
Search it, find it out, I believe we're about halfway through our. Our contract, it's renewed, and we're on the same twenty nineteen or twenty twenty.
Okay.
So let's get back on the rates here, so.
Yeah. So anyways, this rate increase was already approved within the budget, but it's like I said, clean up. Okay. For. This one here, tree program, we talked about that one of the last council meetings, uh, have been working our staff to identify. How much these, the trees are going to cost. Uh. We've been notified that they are going to have some increases, so the number actually. Also here. Uh, at the last meeting, it's a little lower, so the new homes, a new home. Permit after January one, twenty twenty three. Would have to pay for two hundred fifty dollars. For a bollard tree that they're buying now. Maybe a home existing prior to twenty twenty three. This would be application process. The first tree would be fifty dollars if they want to apply for the entry through the city. City will have a set number of bollard trees in this application process, if we have more applications and funding available from our. Forestry program, I go back to council and say, hey. You want to fund these, all that fund, or do you want to hold off and just say the funds have been expended for the year? They'll be first in line for the problem. Uh, but that would be. Resident pays fifty dollars. They'd be on the list. We'd work with them, they'd identify where to go. And then we would install. I'll make sure that we did install it because, you know, I go provide a tree and then it. Waters off to another yard or some other location, and they don't have a bollard tree. And then if they have second tree or more. Say they need to have multiple trees to meet the bollard requirement. Then that would be two hundred fifty dollars for each tree at those, those homes, so it's slightly higher than what we discussed at last meeting, but that was. Trying to make sure if we cover our costs from the tree, and then. The forestry find that. Uh. Our staff, we're going to stall that, we've worked with our other work staff. Um, to get those trees planted. And we'd have a process of mulch, we have mulch over at our complex area, that we hope that we'll be able to use. Say, and things like that. Any questions on that one? That would give us the ability for the street drug, the structure. And then the last one was street repairs, I'm just.
Hang on a second, Julie, you got a question?
If I don't have a bollard, I can put a.
Technically, it's still a healthy bollard. It's just, it's the right way. Did that right way. We're fine, we're able to add it.
That's big, yeah.
I know. And that's why we have the one tree slid. Uh. But we want to make sure we cover our costs, so. But. Actually, when we start getting on specific countries, really, I was pretty. Sure. We've got that for a little bit. Like you're. Questions on that one? And the last one on here is just reflecting like I said, just down the last agenda item. Just need to update it. To the spirit. Oh, it was kicked offline, uh, that would just be reflecting on the last action. So he's eliminating the street bond. To do street repair fee of five hundred dollars. It doesn't show like set up this. Here in that. Any questions? Sarah, any questions on this one?
No, thank you.
All right, I want for somebody to make a motion to accept the rate. Changes. Make a motion. Thanks for motion, can I get a second?
Sure.
Okay, Naomi does a second, all right. Okay, so all in favor of the rate resolutions, changes? Say aye.
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 Okay. Option carry.
Oh, I just have one point, Brenton, could we, and I think we maybe discussed it before, I'd like to put a chart on. The website and on Facebook to advise residents of what their rate, current rates are and what their rates are going to.
We do. We do have a chart that identifies.
Oh, is it on the website?
It's, I guess it's dropdown, so you go to the website, you just click on, you can show me. It'll say, so water, sewer, and it'll have dropdowns, it'll show you all the rates right there.
Okay.
But it'll do a reminder of those for folks now that. But you do a reminder of those for folks now that. Updated. Play the water rate increase. And say something like that, of the water rate increase and refer them to the website. It has it right there.
I think it would be a good idea, just so people are aware of what's coming and when.
Yep. All right. Jim, you got your next one.
This this for another house meeting I done with a project, the balancing change order and discussed numerous times, balance and change orders. Balance construction contract, the quantities that were as used. Uh, this one is for the seventy-sixth round, well, ten of seventeen. We have to hold up some money on that. Uh, just some cracking issues on that roundabout. Uh, the quality pretty much case for such. Put enough joints into into that and it wasn't the fault of the contractor. So the contractor then requesting that we. At least that five thousand dollar energy, but uh, this is a negative change, negative amount of one hundred and forty-three thousand to your nineteen dollars. So this would call out that. So that construction project wasn't a lot of items that needed a substantial amount. Some of it was just three people up. Of uh. Some pipe, but majority of the work on here was pretty much just a. Typical contract deviation to the construction. So.
Jim, are they still gonna do something with those cracks then?
So I've talked it with the highway department on it and the question is the right time. Yes.
Yeah.
And they want, they're gonna do something just add her, but it's the right time to do it. It was sixty-four that would be shut down. They feel like that roundabout needs to be shut down completely. So I know how much. How well that's gonna go over down the roundabout. So um. Last I heard from the highway department was get sixty-four done, get that one in. What I could do to at the same time.
Nope, that that's always good.
Absolutely brutal.
That's what I was hoping you would say is they're not gonna try and do it in one sweep here summer because I would say no.
Yeah.
But okay. All right. Well, it's fine. We'll talk about that then when we get done with the sixty-four.
Okay. Any questions on this one? Housekeeping item that says. Permit. Someone make a motion?
Sorry, not fast enough with the mute button. I'll make a motion.
You'll do a second, Sarah. How's that?
That'll work.
All right. All right. Okay. Sarah, you're still good with the with the uh, second on that?
I am, as long as the county doesn't think that they're gonna fix those cracks and we're gonna get special assessed again.
No, no, that's that boat sailed a long time ago. So.
Good. Thank you.
Okay, so all in favor, say aye.
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 All right, motion carriers. The pond, Jim.
All right, Mr. Mayor of Council. Public Works notified of a slope flip, slope failure on the west bank of the Lost River Stormwater Pond. Adjacent to eighty-eight forty-four Northern Lights Avenue and Lost River Fifth. Um, there was a location now provided in the. Back in the middle, everybody understand where Lost River Fifth and the pond is.
Yeah, I don't notice the failure.
So if you look at the picture, show you, you bring up the pictures here. So um. City staff reviewed the site and provided detached photographs for this memo. Jason, bring us down those. Um, so basically there's the location, the Wall Avenue on the north, the train on the west, not the train, but China.
That's an old, old map.
Right there. Yeah, it is. So that's the, that's where the slope failure occurs. But on the next one, please. All right, go to the next. So you can see there in that picture, I don't know if you can turn it up on your computer or not, but you see how the rip rap wasn't aligned with it? Now it's not.
Oh.
That whole side of the bank has slumped off.
That's what you're looking.
Yeah, even by the cement or by the sidewalk.
It started up by the up by the sidewalk. Yeah, and that those red lines on there, so you can kind of see where it. Where the grass line lineups, you can see how much it's actually slumped. So.
So it's like coming down.
Yes, it's falling into the pond is what it's doing.
Certain underwater spring or something there? Is there underground, I mean, spring that's just. Loosely loosening up that soil over time or what?
Take a look at that picture up on screen. See something?
Take a look at it on your laptop.
Take a look at it on your laptop.
Yeah, it's just water running over it.
Well, no.
Dark green.
Light green.
Oh, yeah, a lot of watering.
So that's what we think the problem is. Um, I don't know for sure.
Yeah.
But that's what we're anticipating. So um. Anyway, so staff reached out to a geotechnical engineering firm, American Engineering Testing. Uh, to perform a geotechnical evaluation and a stability analysis. This wouldn't correct the problem. This would just tell us what needs to be done. Correct the problem. I don't envision this to be a real cheap fix because if you go to the next picture. You see where it is underlying the next must be the next.
Concrete path.
It is undermined the concrete path. There's certain significant bumps. So. Which one is? So there's kind of a friction.
You can even see water right there on the sidewalk.
Yep. And it was very very similar to that time that. You all went out there. So anyways, um, A E T provided a valid. Lump sum fee, basically nine thousand dollars. For coming up with the new slope, a geopolitical evaluation, scope analysis for this. For this slide. Like I said, this isn't isn't gonna fix it, but it's gonna give us an idea of what it's gonna take. To fix that. So obviously, we just can't do nothing because it's a safety hazard.
Right.
Um, we have identified.
We might have to have a talk with that homeowner and all.
That's what I just can.
Let's see, stuff's real, but here's, I mean, okay, if we get the nine thousand dollar analysis done, I gotta feel that, but it's probably gonna come out of this.
So we've had some discussions with the attorney. As to if they would anyway, adjacent property owners. Would be liable and responsible for this and. They're going up in the arguments, but we kind of.
So what about our um, stormwater uh. Stuff that we enforce on all the builders and developers to make sure that they don't destroy stuff. They have to put up certain. Um, little hay bale.
Yeah, these best managed practices, the control that are run up.
Correct.
Uh, and so once the site has reached seventy percent. So it's no longer. Into the, they don't need anything like that. So.
Because I don't think this is gonna be an isolated incident is what I'm getting at. Okay.
There's another spot where something like it might happen on itself.
How long has this pond been there?
Pond was constructed in late two thousand and seven.
So I mean.
If the mission wasn't constructed until two thousand and twenty.
I find it, I mean. Don't, isn't there some responsibility on the entity that designed it? I find it a little hard to believe that. We're so, this is only gonna last a few years and now the city is stuck paying a bunch of remediation costs.
Get into us. Cause there, I believe there was a geological report in the beginning that allowed the slopes to what it is. It was constructed that. Uh, going forward, I don't think you're gonna see any sidewalks moved around a pond like that. Just.
Because of that.
Well.
But it was built through the plans, plans came from a geotechnical salt would be kind of a challenge to determine them. Or take us and their response.
So the other thing too around that pond is that there is irrigation that the. That's been put in there for the pond. I don't remember for the if that irrigation goes on the other side of that. Sidewalk or not, but on the east side it does. You know, there's all those plants there and they get over water.
So they actually had to turn it down.
Yeah, they were watering off it. Cause this same phenomenon was happening on the east side. Yeah.
And it was being watered too much. So uh, you know, if if you. You get new sod, I've never had it, but apparently you're supposed to water it. All off.
And people say, yeah, water. Isn't a lot and then you can't go after about two months.
Call it down after about two months. So I'm assuming that that house. Was water established.
Yeah.
Assad and maybe this year the watering year will be less. And if that's the case. Maybe this isn't, this isn't.
So if we do this analysis, they'll try and figure out the what, and they're gonna give us some suggestions as to the fix that too, correct? Cause this will probably. Be on the east side as well.
Well, I think we can get ahead of that because this is gonna. Get ahead of that one on the site. Earlier on this, when this happened, you know, you take a walk around the pond, you can see where there are people that are watering quite a bit. And I think that's an education thing too. I I assume that if a homeowner would look at this and you're watering a lot. Worth can get around.
Yep, okay.
Granted, we want three.
Be looking at that and their yard and determining like how to fix it if they keep watering.
No, no, basically we have a problem with it. And there would, it would be to determine how far, so somewhere between the slope. Then here it failed. So there's a slip plane in there where the ground just slumped. So in order to fix that, you have to get below that slip plane. We don't know where that is without having them do their. Analysis and see what the cohesion is of the soils.
We have to do some core samples.
How how many other ponds do we have in town that are gonna be similar to this?
There are none with the sidewalk.
Okay. And you think that's the main?
Well, they get out there.
But the sidewalk's gonna be the expensive part probably to fix it as far as, you know, tearing that out. Taking the ground underneath it out until it can get to solid base and then putting it back in.
Backing it in their bench yard. Make it so it doesn't. Live with the end here, pull that slip. So. It gets, you know, there's the water to run across, hit the sidewalk. If it doesn't come across sidewalk, go down, it's underneath the sidewalk where there's a, a sand leveling. Get underneath that and just bypass the sidewalk.
Question for you, Russ, um, and forget the planning and zoning, um. Do you guys recommend like a a concrete sidewalk like that or should you start off with? Just a gravel path until homes get established and then they can put in a sidewalk later?
Yeah, they're getting the detail.
They they look at a plan, plan and show. Show this, this comes. Uh, on the plans.
Okay.
This was, this was done as an amenity. You have, you have to be careful. What you really want for amenities. I don't think anybody anticipated. That happening. But once it has. It should. Inform us for the future.
Oh, agree.
Yeah.
Which is why I just brought that up.
I honestly. H- honestly, I'm a fan of sidewalks around ponds. I think it's a beautiful addition to an amenity. And I can't say for sure if the sidewalk was actually the cause or if it's the slope or the grade. I think that's what this report is going to. Help us to determine. But clearly, there's some contributing factors um. Regarding moisture, it could be slope, it could be grade, it could have been installed improperly. It could be any number of things. So we need this report to tell us. Where we need to go from here so that we can understand what that is to ensure it doesn't happen again moving forward.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that either because I'd like to know that what this is because uh, this is probably gonna happen. Again.
So sidewalks are put around ponds, you put around the pond. This is headed in with a good point and it's the safety shell. Uh, the way this pond was designed, when it's at capacity at a hundred year flood, it's all the way to the top. So basically back at the top of that picture is where the water level is. So. The sidewalk would be underwater. So uh, in the future, there's a sidewalk around ponds, which is enough for a bit is a bath beyond the top, 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 not halfway up. So.
Yeah.
It feels for the borough.
And I guess maybe looking too far ahead at this point, um. Where where will our funds come to? Fix this?
All its funds.
There should be still, but still. That's true. But it'd be Lost River Fifth. The other. Well, it could be the person who ordered awesome.
Yeah, the person who ordered.
It probably actually be person who ordered assessment when it was built. So. Yeah. We do have tons of work there. Okay. I'd recommend we get the uh, analysis and fair what's going on here.
We'll make.
Those recommendations before to approve both the analysis and the uh. Well, stability analysis and the geotechnical evaluation. Uh, that would be a total of nine thousand dollars and then uh. Basically authorized if additional drilling is necessary, that work would be done at twenty-eight dollars per foot to maximum depth of fifty feet. I don't have this picture being any additional. Drilling that needs to be done, but they have it in their proposal. So I don't want to bring it back to you if that's the case.
So good with that, Jim?
Yeah, I'm good with that. I'm gonna, can we cap that then at, well? Fifty times twenty-eight is gonna be your, what? Thousand and. Thousand four hundred dollars?
You want to cap it at twelve grand?
Well, I was talking about the extra, but yeah, okay. Um. Not to exceed.
Fifty times twenty-eight is fourteen.
Fourteen hundred, yeah.
Saying cap at twelve or let us know if to start to exceed twelve. But let's just say up to twelve.
Okay.
Yeah.
I will, yep, make that motion.
Okay, somebody want to do a second?
I can second if you can hear me.
I can hear you just fine. All right. So Jeff did a motion, turned to the second. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay, motion carriers. All right, Jim, what do we got?
Good news, you'll know what my news is if you look through the section items, but well, the meter bulb has been delivered to West Fargo. It is in Keith Don Dragging's yard. So.
Interesting.
That is a good thing. That is, it is, it's done. Yes, so.
I did have our lock and key, so I'm gonna get walking away.
Looks like it's under, well, it's right next to a couple of trucks that you probably have to get around now, but. Um, it is all complete. We talked about that. It's all complete. In terms of that, certainly there's. Probably the wall, got four foundation, put it in there, pump it up and. The startup on it. So. I think he's pretty anxious to get that one done for that project. He's been looking for two years for them too.
Yeah.
Keep an open project for two years, a close project until they can do it.
Okay, well, just calm on bridges. Your eyes on that five. Right, nothing, they better just be careful with it.
That way you can. About the rate increase.
Yes.
Soon as they can have done. So. Uh, construction is pretty much actually has stopped unless you see something on the south side. Everything is, what's the? See? So.
Just out of curiosity, how far did Excel Energy get with their new line out to?
I don't know for sure.
Seems like there was still some pipe in the ditch before the big snow came up. I was just curious.
Yeah, I have been on. I just asked Joel, I think he, they'll still be working because he said he was going off to look at it.
I think they're slowly just been checking at it, but.
Right steps. Right. I just haven't seen them driving around for a little while, so I wasn't sure if they were still working on it or if they're waiting.
I don't.
I don't, they worked on that for a few days trying to get that under the river. So. And I know they were working on something on the other side, but I don't know if they ever got booked. All right.
Oh, sixty-sixth Avenue, you can prove by the specs I've looked for bid sixty-third, Jim, we had our. Thirty, almost thirty percent design review meeting last, last Thursday. Also, everybody attended that along with the staff. So that project is progressing. So the Wall Avenue, we got a bid here in the executive section. So that's. Information you've seen last week. S R F uh, updates are due next week. So we'll get those done, we'll get those signed. Just put into it for it. And then we have worked on identifying the ownership of the four door for the final flush. Got the ownership and easements defined on both corridors. Now you see it figured out from part one with the cats coming. But of course, with the fighting.
Okay, the insurance, all I got. So you got, all right. Brett, what do you got?
The main thing I had just started my year. Also, the next one for this month will be January twenty-fourth. This was a. Interesting year for. House meetings because of holidays. That's all I got.
Okay. Uh, see portfolio reports. I was just gonna make a reminder to everybody with the snows that we've got to make sure, uh, if you're close to a hydrant, make sure you clean them. Uh, I usually like trying to see five feet of opening around them for if something happens, uh, they can hook up quickly. And if one is in front of your house and you've got a problem, you want them to hook up very quickly. So. Try and make that happen. Um.
That's true.
You good? All right, um. Some reports from Bismarck, uh, they are gonna be discussing the Homestead Credit Act tomorrow at ten thirty in the Senate. Let's see if I can get on there. I don't know if I'm gonna be able to make it or not, but I might send something to Judy tonight. I do want to try and see that get uh, updated. So it was, I think it was twenty years ago since they did any updates or look at it. I think it's time to review that and make it so it's more palatable for uh, some more seniors. Um, also gonna be trying to talk to our legislators about the Flush to Fargo project, see if we can keep that thing in their forefront so they can get some uh, assistance on that. Um, also gonna be trying to talk to our legislators about the Flush to Fargo project, see if we can keep that thing in their forefront so they can get some, uh, assistance on that. And on the nineteenth, we have the state of the cities, the, uh, chamber, FM chambers pointing on. I guess I get to put on my monkey suit, stood up there for that one, so that's on the nineteenth in the morning. Uh, that's all I got. Sarah, you got anything?
Nope, not this round, just an awful lot of review meetings for new and upcoming infrastructure and preliminary discussions. On some of the planning for some of the construction and detours coming, um, there'll be more to come on that, so just a heads up to everybody, it's all I got.
Yeah, sounds good. Naomi, what you got?
I do have a question now, I'm wondering if. Work on getting the city website updated just a little bit. I'm just noticing that, um. There's old staff listed. So on the website and. I just, in my opinion, I would like to see it just gone through and updated, probably, you know. Weekly, maybe, um. Whatever, you know, unless things are kind of slower, um, then probably don't need to look at weekly, but. I just really wanna make sure that the information is getting out to the residents that need it, um. And they're able to find what they're looking for and have the correct. But that's really all that I wanted to talk.
Um, I don't have much either, we just continue with our hundred and fiftieth op meetings. That's really what's been taking up my additional time for portfolio.
Yeah, yeah.
And, uh, I really don't have much either with the end of the year last, uh, since the last meeting. Not really much has gone on, so Metro Cog has canceled their, their meetings at the end of the last month and the first meeting for this month, so I. Have a meeting at the end of this month coming up, other than that, that's it.
Okay, so with that, then I'll read the preamble here, right, Lucas? Next, executive session, help the show to NDCC four four dash zero four dash nineteen point one. To discuss negotiating strategies or provide negotiating instructions to its attorney for other negotiator or other negotiator regarding contracts for the purchase of real. Property related to the Wall Avenue project. Yeah, so let's take five minutes here and we'll prep up for it to give.